Meeting to order. Welcome to the full Board of Education regular meeting on December 9th, 2020. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart. Corey Montiel.
Here.
Greg Deetz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Joseph Como.
Sure. And Sue, will you please make sure that we were properly posted?
Yes, we were.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate that. Let's start off with a quote this evening. Never be in a hurry. Do everything quietly and in a calm spirit. Do not lose your inner peace for anything whatsoever, even if your whole world seems upset. Saint Francis de Sales. Good one for this time of the year. And bright lights. We have Principal Kristen Higgins here from Waukesha North. If you hear us, Kristen, you can come on in. I don't know if you're just out in the hall or... I don't know if I'm yelling loud enough.
Hello, good evening. I am sorry I missed the introduction. Am I here to introduce the North students or am I here for our remarkable student?
Remarkable student.
Okay, I'm going to invite her and is that okay?
I think it's always best to start with remarkable students, don't you?
We have three of them here tonight.
Excellent.
We're going to just start with this one. So first of all, good evening. So tonight I would like to introduce you to Waukesha North High School, excuse me, Waukesha North High School student Nicole Cheeseman. She is a 12th grader and Nicole is graduating in June. And what is incredibly amazing about Nicole is she's going to be graduating from high school and within a few days later, she is going to be also graduating with her bachelor's degree in business management through the early college credit program. So Nicole is widely known and well-respected across our building. When I spoke with her counselor, Mrs. Stigler, I'd like to quote her. She stated, "Nicole is one of the most ambitious and driven students I have ever worked with. She is taking a record number of college credits through Start College Now. She's taking 18 credits right now while working at her parents' business and she's also starting a second job next week." So quite impressive. If that isn't impressive enough, Nicole plans, once she graduates, she would like to live on her own. She would like to be independent right away and it's her goal to graduate debt-free from college. So without further ado, welcome to Nicole Cheeseman.
Welcome, Nicole.
Hi. Do you have any questions?
Where do you find the time?
It's kind of easy now that everything went online because I did not plan on taking this many except for everything went online. So it was a lot easier to fit work in. So then it worked out.
Francheck.
So Nicole, are you in E-Achie? Are you just a regular virtual high school student?
I was taking one class because all I had was an English credit I needed and I took that on E-Achie. And then I have one class at North, but I don't, I changed it to virtual just like last week because it was easier because I had to drive there for a second hour every day. It was just easier if I just took it online. So yeah, now I just do Zoom or like a, we do WebEx for the hour.
And then the rest of your classes are at WCTC?
Yeah.
Online?
Because I have one in class, but then they transferred it online because of, you know, COVID. So everything's going online. Yeah. Yeah?
Mr. O'Brien?
So how much virtual did you do in your freshman and sophomore year and then going into your junior year? Have you?
Oh, yeah.
Have you done way more in your senior year than you did in the previous three years? Or how's that? How's that?
Freshman and sophomore year, I didn't do any college. And then junior year in the summer, I started doing college and then leading into the senior year, I took a lot of credits. So that's what the, that's why it was so easy to graduate because I took too much at once, as other people would say. And then I did online courses through E-Achie and every year. I took two in sophomore year, one freshman, and then I think another one junior year for online classes. So I was used to the online atmosphere.
What were the online classes you took in E-Achie?
I took accounting. I took, I don't know, oh, Intro to Software Applications. I'm taking English now. Yeah, I don't know any other ones though. I don't remember.
Did you take the typing class?
Yeah, I took, it was just typing. I don't know what it is. It's like keyboarding one or something. Yeah.
And I guess I didn't catch it, but how many, you have college credits now?
Yeah, yes.
How many college credits are you getting so far?
I don't know the total, but I know I have like eight classes left for the spring semester. So I have four and four, like four and five, so.
Your next education program was, where are you going to school next?
I'm staying at WCTC. I'm not going to lean on to anything else. I'm just going to end it there because I don't really need the degree because I'm taking over the company for the family, but I'd prefer, you know, to have it in case.
Mr. Baumgart.
I was just going to ask, I think, what were your college grades, credits through WCTC?
Yeah, all of them.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
No, yeah.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I just want to compliment you on your choices. I think, you know, this is what we try to encourage our constituents to do and our children to do is to make the choices that best fit them and their specific needs. It doesn't mean about going on to college or doing this or doing that. And we're lucky that we do have a good Waukesha County Technical College that meets where you want to take yourself. And we're lucky that we have a school district that's been able to provide you some help.
Yeah.
Even with COVID.
Yeah. It's really nice to be able to like self, self-progress as far as you want to, you know? You have control of how much you want to do or how little you choose to do, you know what I mean? So it's really nice to be able to push yourself as far as you want, take as many as you want.
Mr. Deetz.
Have you always had this self-motivation from early on?
Yeah, yeah.
Or is it something recent that just happened to you?
No, I really like to get a lot done all the time. I like the stress. I enjoy it so much.
From, from little?
Yeah, always.
Little on, yep.
Elementary.
Yeah.
Mrs. Voight.
And what is my family business?
She's my five-year-old teenager.
Oh, Greg, were you done? I'm sorry.
What is the family business?
Sussex Tool and Supply. It's tool and dive.
Industrial tool distributor.
Yeah, my brother, he's in the manufacturing portion. So he took all the courses early as well. He helped me figure out.
So you're trying to push mom and dad into early retirement? Is that the idea? You okay with that?
Yeah, it's okay. It's all right.
Can I adopt you?
Thank you.
She's got a 10-year plan at least, though. It took us 10 years to take the family business and it'll be at least 10 years for my brother to do it.
Yeah, yeah. It's not right away, no.
There's a lot to learn in a small business, isn't there?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a small business owner too. There's a lot of hats that you wear. And so what are your primary responsibilities right now in the business, Nicole?
Right now, I'm the purchasing agent. Like that's the title I have. But I do like accounting and then I'll do returns. It's like wherever I'm needed, but overall, like I'm the purchasing person. So every time someone places an order, I just deal with the process after.
Sure. And you want to be wherever you're needed.
Yeah.
In order to run that business someday, you need to know everything about it.
Yeah, it's very nice being able to like know so much about all the different parts because then it's easier to explain to others and then it's easier to know a conversation. You know, if somebody's having a conversation and you have no clue what they're talking about, it's better to like understand what they're saying and then like learn even more.
You don't know, or you don't have to do everything, nor should you, but you should really have a good feel for, for everything.
Yeah.
Wow, fantastic. Any other questions for Nicole? Yes, Amanda.
Not a question, just want to congratulate you on your, oh, I'm sorry, your progress thus far.
Thank you.
Keep pushing for your goal to graduate debt-free. It's an amazing feeling.
I'm almost there. I'm almost there.
You're years ahead from when I was able to do it, but I was very fortunate to do it and it's an amazing accomplishment. So be very, very proud of it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I can't take out a loan yet, so I have to pay it. You know what I mean? Like I kind of have to.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Very proud.
Mr. Montiel.
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't be more impressed. Your accomplishments are, I've never seen anything like it. The first thing that comes to mind is you're living the American dream, not only, you know, not only because you earned it, but your parents did. Free and public education, you took full advantage of it, excelled, you know, beyond anybody's wildest dreams. Your parents or your family started a small business and you're going to go into it. Frankly, our country needs a whole lot more people like you. So congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Who else? Great job, Nicole.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was pretty impressive. Moving on to our recognitions and, oh, do we have, I'm sorry, we have other students?
That's going to be for these representatives.
Ms. Higgins?
Representatives.
Oh, okay, for the reports, the high school report. Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. Moving on to our recognitions, we have, last month, we had our first round of Going the Extra Mile and we're going to acknowledge some people who have done that. There's many that do in our district each and every day, but there's a group that we want to recognize right now. Dr. Seibert, would you like to introduce that group or Dr. Cook?
Sure, I'd be happy to start, Mr. Como, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cook. So, thank you. And going back to last month, this was something that President Como thought about, that we talked about. I think it's a great idea because we have people all over this district that are going the extra mile every single day. Today, we'd like to recognize some very important people that have helped us to keep our schools open and that is our district nurses and our team of district contact tracers. And those people have, whoever thought a school district would need contact tracers, right? And we do not have, we have three nurses that are getting after it every single day at a very high level. And we have a team of contact tracers that is working day and night, weekend, in order to make sure that we are doing everything we can to keep first and foremost our kids and staff safe, but also, like I said in the previous comment, keep our schools open. So Dr. Cook works very closely with them and so I'd like to turn it over to him to say some additional comments.
Dr. Cook?
Yeah, so our, our school nursing team, Wendy Lang, Beth Pepler, and Katie Hurdle, along with our contact tracing team, they have done a tremendous job. As, as we are meeting right now, the emails and the text messages have been coming around about cases. So we know that they are working, you know, from seven o'clock in the morning when our secondary schools start opening up and they're still processing cases that come in. One of the things that we've learned this school year is that the notification of positive cases comes, I don't want to say 24/7, but usually between the hours of 6:00 AM and about 10:00 PM when people will inform us. And this team has been on the spot making sure that we identify the kids that are affected, the staff that are affected, and, and making sure again that we can keep our schools open. So this is a crew that has definitely gone the extra mile for us this year. They have stepped up in many instances. They've helped us refine our processes. They have worked directly with our families and with our staff to make sure that people are notified in a timely manner. And they take the decisions that they have to make very, very seriously. We did have a situation where a quarantine came in today and, and it was, it was one of those ones where they were, it was very challenging because the group of students just came back to school with us on Monday, but they had more known positive cases come in again today. So it's not a job that they take lightly. It's work that they've, they've definitely bought into. They've created the process for us and we're extremely grateful to have this team on hand in the school district, so.
And we, we would usually like to have a representative here, but guess what? They're working. So, and they're doing what?
They are working and we're trying, we're trying not to ask too many more nights from them than they, than they already have, have committed to us. We, you know, just, just for an example, we have contact tracers working for us at night and on the weekends. Our nursing team has signed up almost to be on a, you know, in an on-call basis. So we have a nurse that usually would just work in a regular year, Monday to Friday for us. They're signed on committing to a Saturday and a Sunday to help us keep our doors open.
Yes, we, we thank them deeply for, very, very grateful for everything that you've been doing and that you will be doing as we move through this time of COVID. What an important role. Thank you for your efforts. Moving on to our reports given by our students. Last month, we weren't able to hear from North, but this month, we are going to hear from both North High School and West High School. So why don't we start with North? If you could introduce yourselves, I would appreciate it. I'm sure you guys have been dreaming about this for the last month each and every night, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and here are two more amazing North students, Kellen Figueroa and Maggie Flanagan. So why don't you guys introduce yourselves to the board.
Hi, I'm Maggie.
I'm Kellen Figueroa and we're representing Waukesha North High School. We're both seniors at Waukesha North. Oh, okay. So boys soccer, this year, they didn't win as much games as they would have liked, but they had four all-conference players. And talking to guys from the boys soccer team, they were just grateful to play a complete season. Obviously, you know, with the restrictions and stuff, they were lucky, so.
So girls and boys cross-country, both teams competed in small meets. The boys had a state qualifier, that's a junior, Patrick Willis, and the girls are really proud that they collected 66 bags of shoes, each with 25 bags for companies in developing countries, which was really cool. If you see that picture, it was covering right before you walk into North. Really cool.
So football, I was a part of the football team this year. We have a young new coaching staff. It was their first year coaching and they're very committed to the program and the North community as a whole, so that was awesome. We had two non-conference wins this year and we also won the Classic Eight Team Sportsmanship Award. We had a lot of issues, you know, with COVID and different injuries and stuff. You know, we had a lot of kids in quarantine and, but we just kept fighting and we rescheduled games and did what we could do to play and we had a full season. So we had eight all-conference players and we also have multiple seniors moving on to play college football, so.
Girls and boys volleyball. So there was no tournaments this year. The girls had nine seniors, which is really impressive. They also beat McGowan ago for the first time in years. The boys also beat South in their first game, so that's super exciting.
Girls tennis, they had five seniors in the biggest team that North has ever had and they had a lot of JV matches and wins on there.
So cheer is working to perfect their routines for the competition season, which is dance here and game day. Their first competition is next weekend, December 19th, and they'll be performing at various basketball games this season.
Girls golf, they placed fourth overall in the conference and two of their golfers made it to sectionals this year.
All right, so dance. So I'm on the dance team. Our first competition is this weekend, which is a virtual competition. We performed at all the football games this year and we're unsure what Nationals is going to look like. It's normally in Florida, but we'll see how that's going to turn out in the next couple of months.
The boys hockey team, obviously they just started, but they have started off the season strong with three wins in a row.
Boys and girls basketball, their games are being livestreamed for fans at home to keep restrictions down and the girls beat Miss Geico last week, so.
Drama Club, they had their fall show that was called Grim Spectaculathon. It was a virtual show due to COVID, obviously. They have auditions for the new play coming up on the 14th and 15th of December.
So I'm the vice president of Key Club and at the first, at one of our first meetings, we made masks for the school. We're continuing to make cards for veterans overseas. We enjoyed our trick-or-treating for canned goods again this year. That's a yearly thing that we do and we just made baskets for Thanksgiving.
Our Black Student Union at Waukesha North, tomorrow night, the Black Student Union is going to be having a movie night at North High School and representatives from all three school districts of Waukesha High Schools are going to be there.
All right, so student council, they planned a successful week of homecoming and the traditions that go along with it. Obviously, many of the things were canceled, so student council was able to make up a new idea to replace the hallway decorating and we decorated floats this year instead, so it was outside and social distancing. This week, there's a blood drive, which is tomorrow actually.
So our float actually caught the attention of the Freeman. We won our school contest, obviously, so that was a lot of fun.
If you see that picture of one of our students in the Waukesha Freeman.
Obviously, you know, we still like to honor the memory of our fallen student, Kai Lerner. This summer, around 200 students, including myself and Maggie, received free EKG tests this past August. The Kai Lerner Foundation has also purchased several defibrillators. Those are now in, you know, places like Waukesha Police Department Squad Cars and in parks and places like that. EKG testing will also be held every two years because that's what like the doctor recommended time period is for that.
All right, so your book is collecting senior quotes and senior pictures. Last year's cover is featured on the company's website, the publishing company's website. They finished the, the design of the cover for this year and luckily they moved to a fully virtual, so they can design anywhere because there are many students that are in your book that are at home all the time. And they're collecting information from students through Google Forms, which is really exciting so that we can hear from everyone at North.
So also, at Waukesha North, you know, with the restrictions and stuff, it's been very hard on the teachers and the students, but we're doing a lot of stuff at North to like keep students and teachers engaged. And so teachers have been teaching from like quarantine and instructing from home, which is obviously very difficult compared to being in a classroom. So we have the special education and co-teachers in the classroom. We also have other virtual teaching spaces like in the media center. We have computer labs, ones and two, zone one and two, and then the flexible learning space for when teachers are out. And yeah, that's the end of our presentation. Thank you guys very much.
Any questions?
Any questions that we have? It's Ms. Ryancheck.
I just had a question. Did your students collect all those shoes from other students or where did they get the shoes?
Yeah, it's from the students. So they, it was like a month, I think, that they announced it for the school to bring in any type of shoes, from high heels to tennis shoes, so for them to make money for developing countries.
Mr. O'Brien?
I think I've been to North more times this year than I have in any of the previous five years and what I'm impressed about North when I visited there during the school year is how hard it's, everyone is trying in this difficult time. And, you know, I think you guys bring to a very positive outlook on the situation we're in, which is, is good to hear. What has been the prizing thing about the situation you find yourself in in a positive way? And I guess we'll try the positive way, the negative way, I guess I can, I won't push you into that.
You know, just how like, it's really opened my, my eyes to how much like everyone in the building cares about the students and the teachers and how committed they are to, you know, giving us a great education and trying to keep us committed this year to school.
I think I've realized how, how much I'm able to just say yes and just keep rolling with it because, you know, we went from hybrid to four days to hybrid and I was like, all right, that's the next thing and you just have to do it. And really how much we should appreciate our teachers, like there's teachers that are teaching with COVID at home, like that are tested positive and sick and they're teaching from their houses, they're even getting a COVID test, which is super, we should be super grateful.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Maggie. Thank you, Kellen, for your update. Moving on to our Waukesha West report. Please introduce yourselves tonight.
Hi, my name's Alec Bowlen. So I'm in boys volleyball at Waukesha West. I'm also vice president of student council. I am treasurer of NHS. I'm in freshman ignition, Wolverine Leadership Academy, and also in Superfan.
And I'm Jordan Chrysler. I'm a senior at Waukesha West. I am in cross-country and softball. I am in the Wolverine Leadership Academy. I'm the vice president of NHS and this is what, this is what's happening at West this year.
Welcome.
So first, we want to talk about academics a little bit. So for the cohort model, we really wanted to highlight what our teachers are doing at West. So obviously with social distancing and kids being in different cohorts, it's going to be hard to work together on T, or on group projects and collaborate. But through WebEx, we found that teachers are doing a good job at allowing us to still be interacting with our classmates. And then also when you're virtual, it's hard to always know what you're supposed to be working on for the class to stay up to date, but teachers are using Blackboard, as you can see there with the virtual schedule, so you know exactly what assignments you should be working on.
And then I have up there an example of like what my WebEx screen looks like. I'm on the call with Alec. So we can connect with just individual students or teachers and then that's also kind of how our class looks where we'll have the teacher up on the big screen and then we have, if you look on the left there, I have all those, all my different spaces I'm in. I'm in spaces for like full classes where we have our class meetings. I'm also in spaces where it's like just when we want to work on a group project together. So I have a space with three other people to work on like a Spanish project or something like that where we can meet. And then it's also works really well because it's across cohorts. So I'll be in, I'm in my cohort one, so I'll be at school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But then for the virtual people in cohort two, we can still meet through WebEx, so that's a really nice thing that we've been using. And then I can meet with teachers and other students while I'm at home and they're at school if I have questions and things like that. So it's really useful for that. And according to NISH, West High School was ranked 22nd out of 514 high schools this year statewide. So this puts West at the top 5%, 5% of schools comparatively in the state of Wisconsin. So that's just a nice way to recognize that we're doing well this year in spite of everything that's going on.
Then moving on to athletics, we just kind of want to give an overview of how the fall season went. Obviously, seasons were cut short and changed due to COVID. So for boys volleyball, for example, a big part of our season is tournaments. Those all had to be canceled this year only for conference play. So that was unfortunate. And then things like team dinners and stuff like that had to be canceled, but we still found ways to join together as a team and still have a very successful season. And we finished in the top three of conference, which is awesome. And then also we wanted to highlight our football team. They actually had a very successful season. They won their last two games of the modified playoffs this year. They would have went on to state, but unfortunately that was canceled too.
And then we have also our girls swim team up there. They went to state and got fourth place. Our girls tennis team also went to state. And then I have a picture up there on the top right of cross-country. Our team, again, we didn't have those nice team dinners or team bonding kind of things like that, but we did our best. We had a lot of duel and trio meets in place of our usual like 30-team invitationals, so that was a little different. But being able to still have our whole season and get to do, have our conference meet, our sectionals and state meet was really great for us, so.
And then just like fall, the winter sports are going to have modified seasons, but we're thankful that they're still going to go on. So boys and girls basketball, boys swim and dive, and then boys wrestling are all starting and or have started and had their first couple competitions already.
And then our spring, spring season should start on April 19th. It's pushed back a couple weeks, but we're excited to have a long and healthy season then too.
So then some of what our clubs and activities are doing at West?
So for the National Honor Society, we really wanted to, we figured our service project would be really important this year especially. So even though there were many obstacles with trying to social distance and keep everything clean, we still wanted to have our service project. So we participated in the Women's Shelter Drive. So I organized with Alec and the Vice Pres, and the President, and we worked to donate over 500 items and $600 to the Women's Shelter, which we thought was really impressive in this time where it's a lot harder to get donations from students. So we reached out to the community and were able to donate that much. So that was a great accomplishment for us.
So then, as Vice President of Student Council, we had to find ways to still have like plan our events and have fun, even though we had to be socially distanced. So obviously, we couldn't have a homecoming dance, no Powder Puff, no pep rally. But we were lucky enough to have a small student section at our homecoming football game, which was fun for our seniors. We also had something available for underclassmen, where we set up a screen in our gymnasium and we livestreamed the football game and had snacks and stuff available to them. We also had activities during the week. We decorated our hallway still and we had spirit days where we dressed up. So homecoming still was able to go on even without the dance. Just last Friday, we had our fall blood drive, very successful. We had more than 50 students and staff volunteer to give blood, which was really beneficial at a time like this. And then we're looking to do that again in the spring, like always. And then coming up soon, we're going to start our food drive, where we'll go around the neighborhood. And really, our food drive at West is awesome. The food pantry loves it because our students and our staff, we have tremendous amounts of donations that we get. And then also for freshman ignition, this is a really important day for our freshmen to get familiar with the school before the first day, so they're not so scared. Normally, we have huge groups come and we do team bonding activities and things like that. Obviously, with social distancing, we couldn't have it quite be the same. But what we did this year was we had hour-long tours where groups of mentors, upperclassmen would take the freshmen and they would have their schedules, so they would learn where their classes were, they would do activities, so they would kind of get familiar with the teachers and how things go and some of like the, the procedures and the customs of the school. And then we're also going to start our Christmas Clearing Council soon, where we're going to raise money and give it back in for the Christmas spirit.
And then our theater and drama program, we obviously still wanted to continue with that. So we ended up having our Dracula play called Dracula v. COVID, where because we still had to follow all of the social distancing guidelines, we had, we did it more like a radio show where we had the actors have masks on and be six feet apart and everything. And then the whole play was livestreamed. So it was a really cool way to adapt to the situation that we're in.
And then that's all we have for the presentation.
What questions do we have for Alec and Jordan? Ms. Ryan's check.
Thank you. Was that the Mystery Machine?
Yeah, so our, we always have a theme every year. So then this year's theme was Scooby Doo. So we had like a little photo booth that they were in the Mystery Machine. And then all the mentor shirts had Scooby Doo stuff on it, too. And then all the activities and stuff kind of were fit around that theme.
Throughout your whole talk, it was, this is what we were hit with, but this is how we overcame it. It's just resilience and creativity and just your whole school just coming together. Do you feel like this has brought you closer?
I, for sure. I think that just having to be thrown in a situation with all these people that normally you'd just be going about your day and it's just high school. But now, it kind of forces us to band together and work together to try to fight this thing and make the best of the situation. So I think definitely it brings us together more.
Yeah, like as someone looking in on you guys, I see, and being older, I can see like how this is going to prepare you for your future, where you're more so than just a regular high school year, where you've got to be creative and come back and, and just what you've done repeatedly throughout this year. But as seniors, do you see it as what this is going to do for you in your future? Do you see like the bigger picture?
Yeah, definitely with problem solving, like when, for, I know for Student Council, we sat there for a couple weeks, like we have no idea what we're going to do for homecoming. And people were upset that we couldn't do anything. So we really had to just kind of problem solve and think outside the box and come up with something different. And we thought that we did a pretty good job, where we got the whole school involved. So yeah, definitely that will help us later in life, we think.
Other questions, comments? Amanda, Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you. Just a comment. On behalf of the Women's Center, the, the board members, staff and the clients, thank you so much for doing that. I know that's a big boost for them and I'm going to share with them at our next board meeting that I got to meet some of the organizers for that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we're happy to do it.
I appreciate how you shared how things have been different and how you've overcome. And you had mentioned that you're able to work with other students or students in the other cohort. Can you kind of explain how, how, how you go about doing that? You said with WebEx, but like, do you choose who you want to work with or are you assigned that or, you know, what's that look like?
For, like I talked about my Spanish class with that project. For that class, the teacher assigned us specifically with the cohorts in mind, where we had two people in one cohort and two in the other, so we can work together. Like as we're forming the project, we're working together on this virtual call. Like half of us in class are calling the other half that's at home that way. And then when we present, the people who are in person or like that's their in-person day, present on that day, and then the other two present on their in-person day. So it's really interesting how we've been doing that with that way. And I think that tomorrow is when I'm supposed to present that project. And my partner is actually virtual, like he's quarantined right now. So I'm going to be giving a presentation with an iPad, like next to me talking. So that'll be interesting. But yeah, so that's how we do it with projects. But also, I have like WebEx spaces with some of my friends that are in like my same classes that normally I'd like want to tap them on the shoulder in class and like ask them a question. So then instead, when I'm at home, I'll like send him, send them a WebEx message and be like, oh, what, like, how are you doing this problem or what's going on with that? So I think WebEx is really giving us a way to like act like we're in class without actually being there. So it's pretty much the next best thing. So it's really helpful that way.
Very good. Thanks, thanks for explaining that to us. Ms. O'Brien.
I'm kind of curious about the academic side. Sorry? I'm curious about the academic side. I mean, one of the things we've seen from our committees is that smaller class sizes under the cohort model, are you finding like, let's say in Spanish, that that changes how you receive instruction when you are? I mean, do you have more interaction with the teacher than you have in a larger class size?
I think that right now, we're experiencing a little bit of divided attention, where the teachers have to focus on, okay, these are the kids that are at home, so let me talk to my laptop for a second. Okay, let me talk to you for a second. So it's a little hard to adjust that way. But I think that the teachers at West are doing, I mean, as best they can. It's obviously going to be really difficult. So I think once things settle in more and adjust, then it'll be nice to have those small class sizes, because then when you are in person, you will get that one-on-one instruction that you might not get other times.
Yeah, and I know in the beginning of the year, for the kids that are at home and the hybrid schedule, they were definitely, I feel like it was less connected. They would be like afraid to like unmute themselves and ask a question or something like that. But now, a lot of the teachers just set their laptop right up where they're standing lecturing to the kids, so they're lecturing all at once. And kids at home will just unmute themselves, ask a question, they'll respond, and then they'll listen to what's going on and they'll hear what other people in class are. So I feel like recently, this last couple weeks, it's become a lot better and a lot more connected between everyone.
And, and that's because of the live streaming is pretty much at all your classes now. There's a live streaming component plus the N, which is something we implemented in last, in this new model. The other thing is, have either of you taken AP courses? Have you taken more AP courses under this environment or how, how have you dealt with that?
So I've taken almost 15 now, I think, going after this year. So like last year, I took about, I took six as a junior. And then this year, I wasn't planning on COVID happening, but I'd already signed up for another six. But I haven't found it to be any more difficult than it was last year to manage the course load or anything like that. And like obviously with AP classes, it's a lot more difficult material. So you actually have, you have to be talking to teachers more and things like that. But they've been available on WebEx for me when I needed it, when I'm at home or when I'm in face-to-face. I haven't had a, haven't had a problem talking about a problem or a question.
Yeah, teachers have been very accessible and very like willing to work with the students during this time, because I think they understand that it's going to be harder for us. So just having that accessibility with them is really, we've seen it and it's really beneficial and it's helping to keep up with everything, for sure.
I guess you'll really find out once you take those tests, right?
Yeah.
Yes, Dan.
I just want to thank you for your insights into the academic side of all of this transition and to compliment West and you as representatives of, for your recognition of being the top 5% in the state of Wisconsin. You know, the kinds of students that you are sort of proves why that's, why that's happening.
Thank you.
I can see Principal Pat smiling back there with his eyes, although I can't see his mouth. Well, thank you, Alec and Jordan, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good to see you all in person.
See you, Ryan.
See you.
Okay, we're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to address the board. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak. At the two and a half minute mark, Amanda will give you a signal. And if you could wrap up in your comments in the next 30 seconds, we'd appreciate that. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that would detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers participating this evening, if you, if anyone in the audience could just please silence your phone and in this room, we would appreciate it. We do have five, I think, speakers who have signed up. And we're going to start out with Kelly Piacek. And then on deck, Kurt Burry. Welcome back, Kelly.
Hi. First of all, I just want to thank our principals and teachers who are really working very hard this school year. There are several of them that, especially for my children and many others, have been going above and beyond. And I want to greatly recognize and appreciate the work that they're doing under the circumstances. Several other districts in our county have figured out how to provide mostly, if not full-time in-person learning, navigate quarantines and meet minimum requirements without waivers. So I really am kind of wondering why we're different. Something said at the last board meeting was very disturbing. One board member said that virtual was every bit as good as hybrid. Based on what? How many students are dropping classes? How many failing grades? What, what are the AP exams looking like? How many people are dropping AP courses? What are the MAP scores? You need to share this data with the families in the district. We need to understand how the student body, not just our students, are doing and whether this program is working. When some parents have actually asked for this data, they actually got a bill. I would think that these kinds of questions are things that we want to know and have readily available. Related to the vote last month's return to hybrid, you made the decision, but there's some things that you need to know. I have three students in the district, two in secondary. This last move to hybrid was promised to include more streaming and live instruction. Collectively, of my three children, 16 teachers, three of them are still having no instruction days on hybrid. And the catch-up Mondays are still very much alive and well. One catch-up Monday actually happened on the Monday after Thanksgiving. Explain to me why after five days out of school, we need a catch-up Monday. Mr. O'Brien, in the hearing earlier about waivers, said the quarantines are out of our control. I would agree that they're out of control. But we need to really understand how to control the quarantines. Having experienced three quarantines with my own family and engaging the county health department, they made it very clear that they didn't actually make the decisions about quarantines, that the contract tracers and the teachers weighed in on those decisions. Dr. Cook has frequently said err on the side of quarantine. I mean, caution, I mean quarantine, caution. I actually did mean caution, but. He also rejects the utility of rapid testing to get students and teachers back sooner, or the designation of teachers as essential workers to ensure that teachers stay in the classrooms when they're healthy. We have the power to do this. Given the very, very low percent of positive cases even ever resulting from quarantine, this seems like a reasonable solution. I would end just by saying, Mr. Como, this lost generation that you referred to at the last meeting is in your hands. These students deserve your accountability and taking responsibility for the decisions you've made about the educational model, and the expectations are higher than ever before.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Kurt, followed by Jordan Keen. Welcome, Kurt.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kurt Burry and I have four school age students. I'm going to talk about how the virtual and hybrid learning models are greatly diminishing, diminishing the education versus the five-day face-to-face model at the high school level. And that families that want to choose the five-day face-to-face model really need to have that option. And on note, I said families that want that five-day face-to-face option. For the families that want virtual, we should keep that option. But for a majority of the families that want the five-day face-to-face in-class learning, I believe we need to move towards that as soon as possible. And I mentioned three examples that I really don't think get much conversation in what we're talking about here. And that's the electives, physical education, and the attendance. Now first, let's talk about electives. Art, industrial education, culinary science, choir, band, these, it just seems obvious that in classes where you have to use your hands or where you need specialized equipment, that a virtual model is not going to provide adequate instruction for our children. And it really presents our teachers with a difficult, even impossible task. I mean, these are valuable classes that have big impact. The ability to center clay on a pottery wheel for ceramics, the ability to use a table saw safely when woodworking, when a team, when a group of students get together in a choir concert and work together to hear a beautiful song together. How can you do that virtually? I mean, can anyone seriously defend the position that a virtual component doesn't have serious disadvantage for these classes? Now how about physical education, gym class? When I see a middle school student assigned a video to watch that shows someone exercising on their iPad and then assigned questions to answer, what type of exercises that person is doing, instead of actually doing the exercises with their classmates? I mean, I just got to shake my head. This is not good for the children. I mean, these children are sitting in front of their iPads for seven hours a day. And in my opinion, it's, it's just sad to see the students that need this structure of in-class learning not be able to get it.
30 seconds.
There's also a mindset within the Waukesha student body that, you know, tomorrow's virtual, so it's not a real school day. I mean, is that a mindset or expectation we should be proud of? In fact, I'd love, I'd love to see the statistics of the attendance, because I'm hearing that many students are simply checking out during virtual days. Now if anyone's wondering what we can do about these problems, I mean, the answer is quite simple. Get the students back in school, back with their teachers, back with their classmates for five-day face-to-face. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Moving on to Jordan, and following Jordan is Stacy Keen. Hi, Jordan.
Hi. Good evening to all board members. My name is Jordan Keen and I'm a sophomore at Waukesha West High School. Now I'm going to make this pretty simple and short, because I know you guys have heard all of the facts about telling you that it is safe to be in school right now. And so I'm going to share my personal experience, which I do know for a fact, is the experience of many other students in our school district. I will tell you plainly, my grades go down when we are in the hybrid model. When we were back four days a week, although it's still not ideal, my grades improved and I was able to stay on top of my work. And I was able to go in and receive help from my algebra teacher four times a week to recover from the lack of available help during the hybrid model. Because in this hybrid model, the quality of learning is truly awful. I need to go back to school five days a week for the well, my well-being and the well-being of my mental state. Now let's talk about mental health. Which one do you think is better for my health? Getting to go to school five days a week to have social interaction or sitting in my house alone, isolated from social, social interaction other than my parents? To me, it seems like an easy answer, but for some reason, some of you are having a hard time seeing past your own personal opinions. Apparently, the majority of you aren't looking out for the well-being of the students in this district. You're being stubborn and won't change your opinion, which may I say, is not looking out for the well-being of me and the rest of the students in the Waukesha School District. We demand five days a week now, not some other time in the future. Thank you.
Good, Jordan. Stacy is up next, followed by Clint Winiger. Good, Jordan. Stacy is up next, followed by Clint Winiger. Hi, Stacy.
Hi. Good evening again. I first just want to start off by saying I'm very proud of my daughter for speaking up and advocating for herself. Her journey has not been easy this year, and I blame all of you. I have seen some of your responses to similar stories when people have emailed to you. I have read justification of your actions and not seen you take responsibility for the destruction you have caused for these kids. Not putting our kids in school is destroying so many of them. Here is another example from a mom. She sent an email to you today, but wanted me to read it for her tonight. She wrote, "My daughter is a 10th grader in the district with an IEP. She struggles with mental health, severe anxiety, depression, and ADHD, and learning disabilities. She's very involved with the sports team at the school. Being on this team has been her release and helped her positive mental health and more. I work in special education in a nearby district that has been full face-to-face since school started. I see the struggles of the district's firsthand, but I have concerns. For our virtual learning is extremely hard for my daughter. She has fallen very far behind, but has an amazing case manager who has been helping her along the way. While hybrid was somewhat helpful in the idea that she got the instruction that she needed for at least two days a week, it was also very hard for my daughter to cope and keep up. Then she became virtual for almost three weeks and fell even farther behind. She was benched due to her grades. My daughter was already not doing well with her mental health, as she was struggling with keeping up in school. It was discussed that she could utilize her IEP for getting benched, but then that was taken back. My daughter and others need to be held accountable for their grades, and academics are first, but virtual and hybrid learning have set my daughter up for failure. She went down a hole of talking about wanting to hurt herself, and said she wished she would not wake up because it's just too hard. And I will add, this is a common story." What are we doing to our students in our district with mental health issues to support them? We are setting them up for failure. I am extremely worried about the education that my daughter is receiving. Yes, she's in school four days a week with her IEP, but how many other students do not get to do that? The way the district is handling things is crazy to me. We are not doing what is right for our students. I suggest you really reach out to these other districts and find out how they are doing it. Stop putting your own agendas and do what is right for our kids. And I'd like to...I agree with her totally. My heart breaks for her. I see so many families struggling. So, please consider, as soon as you can, getting back, these kids back into school.
Thank you, Stacy. Clint? Welcome, Clint.
Welcome. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. It's been a couple of months since I've been able to be here because of my own obligations at night with meetings. My family continues to support a return to full-time face-to-face instruction, five days a week. We would like to thank the minority of the board members who keep fighting hard in support of getting our children back in school full-time face-to-face. Your effort is much appreciated. Thank you. For the majority of the board that continues to undermine a return to fully educate our kids, shame on you guys. Shame, shame. You are not performing your duty as a member of this school board. You are not providing a quality, quality education for our children. If you weren't, if you were, you wouldn't need to have an hour-long meeting on asking for waivers. That would be a non-issue. Please tell me how you are educating our children and fulfilling your own mission statement, which says, "Developing our students' capacity and skills to be community, college, and career-ready." Really? I don't think so. Do you really think you're doing that with having them stay at home? How much time at home? In the last nine months, my student has had class in-person only 23% of the time. Twenty-three percent, that's the only opportunity she's had, and that doesn't count quarantines or anything like that. That's one day out of four. By the end of the semester, which is what you voted to extend the current hybrid model period to, it will have been over 300 days since you have offered a full-time education, almost a full year, with still no end in sight. And you know what, Ted, insult the injury? I opened up my tax bill this week. Hey, guess what? School taxes went up 3.4% this year. Nothing like paying more and getting a lot less for our money. I guess you can do that when you have a captive customer and no desire to listen to a majority of the stakeholders, which are the children and the parents. There are some of you that are clearly pandering to special interest groups. And the reason I say that is, there was one insulting comment where somebody said to the effect of, "We can't leave it up to parents to decide what is best." I mean, really? You know how insulting that is to a majority of your stakeholders? The at-risk population are not the people in our schools. They are more at risk not being in school. Get them back in school. Please have the courage to stand up and fight for our kids so they can get the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Okay. Moving on to our portion of the meeting for minutes approval. There are two sets of minutes for consideration here. November 11th, our regular full Board of Education meeting, and there is an executive session also on November 11th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Mr. Baumgart. Is there a second? Taken by Mr. Dietz. Discussion? Corrections? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Corey Montiel.
Aye.
William Ba...
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Thank you. Moving on to our communications. Dr. Seibert, do you have any to report on?
I actually do, Mr. Como. So, I have three letters from the Classic Aid Conference. One got mentioned earlier today from our presenters at North. They were Waukesha North High School, recognized as the Classic Aid Conference Sportsmanship Award winner for football, so congratulations. And at Waukesha West, they were the recipient of the Classic Aid Sportsmanship Award for football as well. And at Waukesha South, they were the recipient of the Classic Aid Conference Sportsmanship Award for boys soccer, girls cross-country, girls tennis, and girls swim. So, congratulations to all three of our high schools for those wonderful awards.
Always good news. Yes, yes. Moving on to our Waukesha Education Foundation update. Mrs. Boe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a brief report to share. On November 12th, the virtual meet and greet for our new superintendent went extremely well, as Dr. Seibert was introduced to our annual WEF sponsors. As part of our first PIE, Partners in Education Elegant Farmer Pie Sale, we sold over $7,000 worth of pies and hams, with over $2,100 profit for WEF. Thank you to all who participated to make this a sweet success. At our December meeting, the WEF Board shared a sincere thank you to Ann Paskevis, Ron Yonkey, Angela Allen, Spencer Dominguez, and Stephanie Galawinki-Mohler, who, for their years of amazing leadership on the WEF Board. Melissa Baxter will assume the role of president. Kim Dove will continue to serve as vice president. Nick Ainsley as treasurer, and Brian Running as secretary. The WEF Board welcomed Felicia Carrillo as our newest member of the Waukesha Education Foundation, Inc., Board of Directors, and the application for Carlisa Schmidt was also approved. Go Casual for a Cause has raised $5,470 to this point in the 10-week fundraiser. As expected, teaching virtually due to quarantines has decreased the need to pay to go casual. So, but we really appreciate the continued support of the staff, who many can be involved tomorrow in the next Casual for a Cause Day. Thank you to the many who supported the Giving Tuesday appeals for WEF, which raised almost $1,700. All of the May 2020 grant winners that you received a handout from Lynette sharing, that she shared as part of the presentation last month, that made up that $35,356 total check, will now receive an extension on completing of their projects. We decided to extend to April of 2022 instead of 2021 because of the pandemic and all the craziness that have gone along with our current schedule. So, the extension is quite justified with the unprecedented challenges of this school year, and we've received many positive responses of appreciation to allow that kind of extension. So, thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Voight. Appreciate that. Moving on to our charter school and program report, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Mr. President, I have nothing to report under that one today.
Our consent agenda is up next. We usually like to start that with acknowledging our public gifts. Mr. Clark, do we have any gifts to report on?
Yeah, we have two gifts tonight. Woodyer Elementary School received $1,500 from Southminster Presbyterian Church to support the needs of Woodyer students and families, and the district received $2,000 worth of school supplies from Waukesha Walmart to be distributed to schools and families of need. So, those are the two gifts tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for those gifts. We appreciate them. Your generosity is, we're very grateful for. Moving on to our consent agenda, or the rest of our consent agenda, there are various categories for your approval. There were no expulsions this month. At this time, if any board member would like to set any aspect of the consent agenda aside, please indicate so at this time. Okay, seeing none. Mr. O'Brien, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of one leave of absence and seven new or modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet. I moved that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second to that? Taken by Mr. Dietz. Discussion? Comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Corey Montiel.
He said aye.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, Kurt. Appreciate that. Moving on to the superintendent report, given by Dr. Seibert.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Como. We will be relatively quick with the superintendent's report tonight. What I really wanted to do is show you where the school district of Waukesha, as the seventh-largest district, looks compared to comparable-sized districts. And what I want you to do is be proud of the work that you're doing and the work that we're doing, because this is not easy, and you know that, and you're working very hard and making the best decisions that you can. And when you look at this graphic that Mary Joel helped make, what you will see is that of the top seven school districts, us being number seven, most of those school districts, and this is not a knock at all, this is, every district has their own data, every district has their own culture and climate, but when you look at where those districts have been exclusively in Appleton, Green Bay, Madison, and Milwaukee, they have been full virtual to date. And I mentioned in last week's update that Dr. Cook and I have been trying to support the Appleton area school district, and we're open to helping anybody that we can, because we've learned so much from this experience of being open since the beginning of the school year. When you look at both Kenosha and Racine, they have been in hybrid models, and in Kenosha's case, they transitioned to full virtual where they remain, and Racine has been back and forth between hybrid, virtual, and back to virtual. And when I'm talking virtual, I'm talking the entire district in those cases. Where here in Waukesha, since the beginning of the school year, we have been successful in being five-day face-to-face at the elementary level, and we've been successful with two different hybrid models at the secondary level. And so, while we have had to periodically close a classroom or close a school for a period of time, we have been able, due to the support of the contact tracers and the nurses we talked about earlier, due to the very diligent work of our principals and our teachers, our instructional assistants, our healthroom assistants, all of those people partnering together, our custodial maintenance staff doing an amazing job, we've been able to keep the school district of Waukesha functioning. We've been able to keep it open, and I think that we should be very proud that we are in the group of largest districts. We are the only one that has been able to do that. And I think it's noteworthy and important that we, while we are always trying to figure out how we continuously improve and how we get better, it's also important to take a pause every once in a while and say, "You know what? We can be proud of this, and we should be proud of it, and you should be proud of yourselves for the work that you've helped us to do." So, with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The only other thing I really wanted to say is that when we talk about teaching and learning, Mr. Dietz will talk a little bit about the transition criteria that we put together and presented at teaching and learning. We're feeling really good about that, and that'll come back to teaching and learning in January and come before all of you in January as well. So, we think that's a nice, positive step forward. And overall, you know, believe it or not, it's 50 degrees outside today, and Mr. Baumgart was on a golf course, but it is going to be Christmas here relatively soon. It's going to be the New Year, and so, I really want you to just take a deep breath, reflect on this, be proud, and have a very happy holiday season. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Questions, Mr. Baumgart.
I'm really happy to see this particular chart that you have up here. Hadn't put the pieces together, realized that of the top seven, we are the only one that has been able to manage various aspects that we've used, and, and this, I was, I kind of anticipated this, but the fact that we have not had to close a school down, a school down, period. You know, we've had ons and offs and stuff like that. That's impressive. No, we see in other cases where schools are shut down completely, or right up there, a whole bunch of them strictly virtual. So, yes, I think we have a reason to be proud of that.
Mr. Ryan.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I want to compliment the administrative team and our entire staff and our community as a whole. I understand that, you know, we all want more face-to-face. I'm pleased with the decision that we made to have elementary full face-to-face and that we're working so hard to keep it that way, even though we're having a lot of quarantines that disrupt it. I'm pleased that that went the way it did, and we can't ignore how hard it has been for our staff, but they've been buckling down and trying to make the best of a difficult situation. I'm also pleased that we've done what we can to try and get back to face-to-face as much as possible in secondary. We all know that face-to-face instruction would be preferred over virtual or hybrid or anything like that, but I think this chart does show that, you know, we've kind of, through our five to four votes, you know, have pushed ourselves to try and get as much as we can out of ourselves as a district, and the administrative team and the board as a whole has been good at trying to deliver on that.
Questions or comments? Ms. Reinichak.
This is a great chart. So, thank you for putting that together. I would also like to see one for our neighboring districts and the places that constituents tell me they're taking their kids or they would move to. We're constantly in competition with those around us right here that move out of our school district to be in another one. So, I would like one done locally if we can. That says a lot. I'd love that it's a visual. Around us, I've never heard of anyone saying they're going to take their kids to Appleton, Green Bay, Kenosha, Madison, Milwaukee, or Racine, but all of those around us, I would love to see that. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I do have a couple of questions. Dr. Seibert and/or Dr. Cook, feel free to chime in, or any of the other assistant superintendents. From a mental health assistance perspective, what are we doing to help our students?
Well, we still have, we have psych, social workers in, focused on implementing and developing our social...
Joe, you're cutting in and out.
It's the best the technology can do right now.
Could you start over?
We also have onsite licensed therapists providing counseling to students who have that identify as in need. So, we have private provider for schools, a loan app, and we're focused on social emotional...
Sharon and Darren, do you mind turning your videos off just real quick?
What do you?
We might be, yeah, we might be able to hear the audio better, and your audio. We might be able to hear Joe better, because we, Joe, we couldn't hear like anything. Do you mind trying to run through that again?
Sure, can you, I mean...
Oh, shoot. Say again? Yeah, it's probably your connection, Joe. We, we're not getting much there.
Would you like to come down, Joe? Could we do that? We can maybe answer another question, Mr. Como.
Certainly, yeah.
Oh, I forgot you're here.
Yeah, he's here.
I'm thinking he's at home. And anybody else, I mean, Dr. Seibert, if you want to, you know, say anything, or any of the other assistant superintendents, too.
He'll be best equipped to give you a full answer on that.
Fair enough. And he's just seconds away.
Did you have a different question?
Part of the wellness program. I did, but I think Joe will probably be in the best position to answer that question. I know he's in the best position to answer that question.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Joe.
Is this on? Is the mic on? Okay. So the question was, what are we doing to address mental health in our schools?
Yes, yes, for our students.
At a universal level, we've prioritized the implementation of our social and emotional learning curriculum this year. So one of our key priorities is making sure that that is implemented 4K-12 across our system. Luke Pinion, our psychologists, our social workers, and our counselors have taken a lead in doing that. Our teachers are implementing that at the classroom level. We're working on self-care this year, making sure that our students and our staff are able to tend to their emotional needs as we go through this school year. We have our full cadre of psych, social workers, and counselors on hand, which accounts about 50 student services staff, and at all of our school locations, we have onsite private psychotherapists working with students who are in high need. So we have maintained the efforts around mental health in our system. It's been something that's been under development for the last five or six years, and it's something that we're actually proud of, and we're fortunate enough, Luke Pinion and Jamie Dobner actually presented at a social work meeting this week on some of our efforts, so.
So if a student is face-to-face, they can just, they're, you know, they're in the building, so they can make an appointment and have face-to-face meeting if necessary. How are we handling it virtually?
We have the ability, just similar to what we did last spring, where students are able to connect virtually with their counselor or social worker. We actually utilized our school-based mental health providers in a virtual counseling capacity with students, so we can provide that service virtually if we need to this year. It just requires that people reach out. Our teachers are monitoring and informing our counselors when there is an issue with students, where they haven't connected, and our counseling staff, social workers, psychologists are reaching out to provide supports to students.
So are those numbers readily available, that information there for the kids, you know, if they're just, if they need to reach out, that they know who to contact?
Correct, correct. That's well-known in our schools who you could reach out to get support from.
Okay, okay. And along the same lines, I'm glad that you came down, because I think we need to hear this, too, from you, Dr. Cook. We, one of the decisions we made last month when we transitioned back to hybrid, we, at the secondary level, we chose to still allow face-to-face for our students of special needs.
Yep.
And, you know, we had heard from at least one parent tonight that it's not working with their student with an IEP. Can you comment on that and kind of fill us in on how this is going? I mean, are, you know, how is it working, and how are the IEPs going, and, you know, what are we doing to make sure that, you know, our students are really being serviced appropriately?
Our, given the parameters under which people are working this year, our staff is doing an exceptional job of connecting with the students that they're working with. We know, though, that there are breaks in service due to close contacts, due to quarantines, where kids will come in face-to-face for a period of time, they may then have to go virtual. We are connecting with students virtual, but we know as a school system that the best possible place for our kids is face-to-face with us, you know, particularly our students with disabilities. Hence the reason why we allowed them to come in four days a week, you know, during the hybrid model. So our staff and our students are engaging to the greatest extent that they can this year, but there is disruption to that. You know, I wouldn't be honest with you if I didn't say that there is disruption in that service, and it's not intentional, it's just the best, it's the best that we can do, one of the parameters that we're working right now. You know, as Dr. Seibert has presented in those slides, you know, of the top seven school districts, we are the ones that have had that face-to-face contact with our kids this year, and that's extremely important. You know, other school districts have worked to try to figure out ways in order to do that. Some districts have been successful, others have not been able to meet that need, so we're very fortunate that we have. We do know, though, that the level of service this year is not the same as it was, for instance, last fall semester, because we had a regular schedule, we had consistency, and we haven't been able to provide that, not because it's not our effort, but it's, you know, our effort and our attention, but it's been a result of COVID. It's the environment that we're working in this year.
Ms. Reincheck?
Dr. Cook, you said it's well-known in our schools who the kids can reach out to.
Yep.
How are you delivering that message to the kids this year? As I asked, I'm sure you were able to do things differently. How are they knowing this year?
With the implementation of our social and emotional learning curriculum, our counselors, our teachers are partnering together to deliver that. Students during their academic and career planning time at the secondary level, students during the counseling instruction that they're getting at the elementary level are able to make that connection. Students of concern are still going through our SST and PST processes, where teachers are bringing forward concerns about students, where our psychologists, social workers, and counselors are collaborating with our teachers, they're reaching out to homes. You know, we've maintained those same processes that we would have had in an otherwise different school year, so those services are available. They're also available on school websites, where people can look up the counselor if they need to find the counselor. That information is readily available, too.
I would think if a child is isolated, you know it more, you would know it more at school than the people that are at the school, but now that they're at home, the parents are saying anything, do the parents know who to reach out to?
The parents can reach out to the school counselors, absolutely. Particularly at the secondary level, that seems to be the first person that they go to is a school counselor, but our social workers and our psychologists are there as well to provide that support, particularly at the elementary level, where we have staffed our schools with those individuals. And we're also, you know, proud we have a social worker now connected to our virtual learning environment. That was a recent ad. So for students who are learning solely in a virtual model, we do have a social worker now assigned to that, so that those students can also reach out for some support.
Any other questions of Dr. Seibert or Dr. Cook, or any of the other assistant superintendents? I'm really expanding your report now, Jim. Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was that everything, Jim? I'm sorry.
That is, Mr. Como. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our committee, as you, our committee reports, as you know, we do rotate who presents first, and this time this month, we're going to start out with the policy committee given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you.
I think you're going to be a little longer than last time.
The what?
I think you're going to be a little longer than last time. You set a record last time of...
Yeah, probably, you did, yeah. It will be a little longer, but it doesn't have to be a little longer. We have 10 action items and one discussion item. The action items all went through the board, excuse me, the committee, the last committee meeting, and everything was pretty smooth. What I'm going to do, if you have this all in front of you, I will do these 10 as a group. In other words, I'm going to scan through them quickly, with brief information, you have all the information in front of you on your iPads or whatever you're using. Then I will seek a vote for the group. If there's anything in there that you have contention with, we can pull that out, and we've been using that procedure before. So, beginning with policy 2340, field trips and other district-sponsored trips, this was a change we brought in to give some consideration of how we are dealing with all of the field trips in a more normal state than the one we're in. So some of the field trips could go directly to the administration for $250 or less, they can deal with it, or if it's a sport or a competition of some kind, they can deal with it. That's basically what happened with 2340. Twenty, lost my numbers. 2700, 01 is a school performance and accountability reports. This really just comes down to the, something we received from the state, that we don't have to do everything that we were doing, because some of it is going to be on our dashboards as well, and really no reason for doing some of that, including some of where the kids are going next, and that is available. 3120.04, employment of substitutes, quite simply a statement that situations do arise when we have to have substitutes, and it's a good thing to do that. Usual in that one. Temporarily filled positions, and that's about it, permitted by law. 3120.10, job sharing, nothing new here, is that the fact that it is okay, that we allow two people, for instance, to come in and share a position, rather than always being seeking full-time positions, full-time members, I guess you'd say. We have a combination one, and this is a little bit longer. Let me get to that one. Lot of, eliminate that page, Bill, you'll have trouble finding it back. Okay, tobacco. Quite a lengthy discussion of the use of tobacco and nicotine and other related products, well, they took that part of the output, but they're still talking about vaping and things like that. It's really just saying that all of this stuff is not to be used and seen in our premises or in events that include the school district of Waukesha. There are situations, exceptions in here, that talk about being able to use products to demonstrate the problems they might develop, things like that, so that in a classroom environment that you might be dealing with in terms of health or something like that, the product may be in our facilities, but it's not there, and first of all, it's not used, and just to demonstrate that it's something that should not be in your hands to the staff or the kids. And it goes on and on, so you'll sure enjoy reading that if you haven't already. 3215 and 4215 are essentially the same thing. One is for staff, one is for support staff. One is for professional staff, one is for support staff. 3362.01 and 4362.01 also piggyback on each other, threatening behavior towards staff, members, or professional, or support staff. This is a discussion of the fact that we cannot allow that, and associated with it, it arrives, I don't, I'm pulling that one up. See, it doesn't always work the way you want it to work. There, maybe it's coming up. Oh, it's coming up. No, keep going back to tobacco, sorry. Yeah, let me use that. Thank you. Doesn't behave. Got to move back here. Okay, it's tobacco, threatening. Just deals with threatening behavior of staff and support. I can't, for some reason, I can't pull that one up. Tobacco. If you see something in there that's bothering you, let me know. 4130, assignment and transfer, quite simply, who in the district is responsible for assignment, and that falls into the superintendent's responsibility. 7230, gifts, grants, and bequests, the discussion there is about being a non-biased opinions as to where things come in or go out, whether they are things that we have received or things that we are sending out, so it's to be entirely non-biased conducted. I can get that insurance one up. It does say that we will have insurance coming up. This discusses about working with contractors, their responsibilities, and included in there is the discussions of things like if, for instance, a board member would be in a situation where the contractor was working and the contractor had some kind of an issue, the board member might also be, fall under that insurance, that kind of thing, or staff member. And fraud.
Just a clarification on that one?
Yes, go ahead.
It says in the notes, I had questioned why they were getting rid of a statement that said the CFO, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services shall administer the insurance program, and that's back in. So they had deleted it?
Well, we did, yes.
And that's back in. So that's, it's like, because that's what they do, so it should be in the policy. So I'm glad that that change has been made.
Under the insurance one you're talking about?
On the insurance one, yep.
Yes. And it really quite, the one on fraud, 8900, employees have an obligation to report fraud to their supervisor or directly to superintendent or the board president when it is the superintendent that who is the violator, so. That includes the action items, and I, at this point, unless somebody has one pulled, wants someone pulled, this did go through the committee, policy committee, last month, and I would now be moving for approval of the policies as presented.
Second to that, Mr. O'Brien? Are there any policies that anyone would like to have pulled out of this motion? Okay. I thought you asked that question, but I wanted to make sure, Bill.
I wondered why you asked it again.
I wasn't, I was looking down, actually.
Oh, okay, you're forgiven.
So I was looking at my iPad, and I heard you ask the question, and I, I wasn't looking at people, so. Any other comments on these? Discussion questions? Yes, Ms. White?
I just have one point of discussion, you know, under 3120, the employment of substitutes, one of the changes that they want to make is to remove the word competitive, and, you know, I guess I had a hard time with that when we talked about it the first time around, that I think we need to be competitive to be able to get substitutes, and because we are, they felt that that wasn't necessary to have that word in the, in the language of the policy. But I just want to go on record saying, as I hope that we're competitive in terms of being able to hire substitutes and give a competitive salary, compensation to them.
Market kind of works that out.
It does.
If not, we're not going to be hiring people, yeah. I see what you're saying, though, yeah. Any other questions, discussion on these items? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on these 10? 10 or is it 11? 11?
10.
10?
Well, but, two of them are doubled. Two combined.
Whatever the total is, Sue.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick?
being able to hire substitutes and give a competitive, um, salary compensation to them.
Market kind of works that out.
It does.
If not, we're not going to be hiring people, yeah. I see what you're saying, though, yeah. Any other questions, discussion on these items? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on these ten, is it ten or is it eleven? Eleven?
Ten.
Ten?
Twelve, but.
Oh, two are, yeah.
Two of them are doubled.
Two combined.
Whatever the total is, Sue.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Amanda Raddie?
Aye.
William Baumgard?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Cory Mantio?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine, zero. Bill?
Thank you. Uh, also, as a discussion information item, we do have policy sixty-one, forty-seven, uh, debt management and deletion of policy sixty-one, forty-five, quite simply what they did, are doing, and, and we will be discussing this, uh, next week and bringing it forward in January, but quite simply, they've combined the two policies into one, um, describes various debt methods, all that Darren is very familiar with already, he, he's been through this one. Uh, and for sixty-one, forty-five is, is, is going away and will be, and is being included in sixty-one, forty-seven. And that is up for next, next week for us and for the committee and, uh, January board
If something comes up over the next few days, give you a call. If there's anything between now and the next meeting for a policy.
Okay. Our next meeting is committee, December fifteenth.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I'm moving on to our technology committee, given by Mrs. Boyd.
I have no report, and our plan, January fourth meeting, is, is subject to change. We're in the process of trying to reschedule it.
Okay. Moving on to finance and facilities, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have one action item and two discussion items on the agenda this evening. Uh, the action item is approval of employee health clinic delivery model. Over the last several months, the committee has been reviewing alternative delivery models to our current employee health clinic. Pro Healthcare has shown that they will be able to help us achieve our goals of improving employee access to care, leveraging technology, and lowering healthcare costs. I move for approval of entering into contract negotiations with Pro Health for employee healthcare clinic services and providing notice to the city and county of Waukesha that the district will not be extending the current intergovernmental agreement or be participating in the upcoming request for proposal for health services for the existing shared employee clinic.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mrs. Boyd? Mr. Baumgard.
Question, I don't know if we're at this point yet, Patrick. They talked about the, the locations that would be available, and in one place, they talked about half a dozen of them, next place, they thought they saw two, they said two. Do you know where they would be doing this?
Um, we're going to start out with two initially, um, and it's going to be, it's going to go according to the, um, the concentration of employees, is how we're going to start. But the plan is, we can move those clinics and activate and go into different clinics as the time goes on, if we need to adjust. So it won't be fixed like our current clinic, and we're going to start out with two. We could add one, we could add two and subtract one, so it's very fluid.
Are these existing facility, for instance, I, for whatever reason, I ended up going into their, were they urgent care previously?
Okay.
Recently?
Mm-hmm.
And I was amazed that, how well that worked. I mean, just quite simply, if, if that's the kind of thing they're talking about here, that makes me feel more comfortable.
Yes, these are existing clinics that Pro Healthcare is currently running.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments? Other questions or comments on this? Darren, could you just kind of take us through a little bit how you've been working with the county and the city on this? I mean, this is, we've been really upfront with, with our partners. Uh, we do a lot of work with these partners, and we, we're heading in a little different direction, but could you kind of talk through how that has looked and how we got here?
Sure. Last, uh, February, um, we, we met, we meet quarterly with our partners. I mentioned that, um, that the district was going to look at a different delivery model, um, or what's out there, because a lot has changed in healthcare since 2014, a lot has changed in the last 10 months in healthcare in terms of virtual visits and technology and, and the role it plays. Um, I, I offered to have them come along at that time, um, and I understand why they didn't. They figured, I, I think they were going to piggyback on what we found, and we've agreed at that time to share every, our findings with them, and we have. So I, I think, um, some good has come from that. They're, they're making the decision to, um, stay with a one-site brick and mortar, um, solution right now. Um, that's a, you know, you can have your own opinion on that, I guess, but, um, we, we offered and shared that information. We, we continue to have a good working relationship with the city and county. This should be seen as, uh, anything detrimental to the operations of the existing clinic or our working relationship with our partners, more so just due diligence that it was time to look at what's out there, because we were getting to ramp, they were beginning to ramp up to send out an RFP for the existing clinic, you know, in early spring, um, and I felt it was only fair that if we were going to opt out, that they, you know, don't do it while we're in the RFP, because they've structured it around us, uh, that we should give them notice, and that's what we're asking for tonight is, um, so, so we can let them know we're not under any contractual obligation to act tonight, but I think it's, it's only fair. So, a, a good process. Uh, we do think we have a, a better solution. Um, we do think, and I, I sent out the FNF tapes and everything, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at the more detailed, um, conversations we've had. Uh, I do think this is something that, you know, we'll have a year to prep for. We're under contract till the end of 2021. Um, but in terms of the locations, obviously Waukesha would be a location, and more than likely Brookfield would be our second location to begin. Uh, but as Patrick mentioned, um, the demographics of our staff and where our claims are is going to drive, um, that final decision. So, um, there's a financial component to this, but I think there's a lot of service things that Pro Health brings, whether it's virtual appointments, MyChart, um, online apps that many of you probably use already within your own healthcare, um, coverage, our medical records going right into, up into Epic individual records, so when we do biometric screening, um, that, rather than information coming to you in a letter, and if you're like me, you put it in a drawer until the next letter comes the next year, that's uploaded right into the, the employee's Epic records. All their physicians have copies of what those blood tests were and the other measures that we undertake under that process. So, and then there's the financial savings, and I think part of that, um, financial savings comes with our ability to, um, scale this to fit our needs. Um, I've always had a question, I, I can't prove it scientifically. We have a different schedule than the city and the county. Our teachers can't just leave in the middle of the day, or, or clerical or, or administration. Um, so I think we can scale it and kind of customize the hours a little better, um, but you touched on it with the facilities, I think the overhead savings. Pro Health's already paid or is in the process of paying for those buildings, and I'm sure we're still paying a portion. I'm not saying it's free and clear, but you don't have that brick and mortar, um, cost structure that, um, in my estimation, I think is a hindrance to the return you're getting at the existing clinic. So, um, and again, it comes at, you know, we're, we're estimating from our 2020 budget about half the cost, um, that the existing budget is, so, it's a quick, maybe not so quick.
Yeah, you know, I appreciate you going down. There's, there are, there are a number of advantages, um, to this, and, correct me if I'm wrong, it, currently, under our self-insurance program, isn't 70% of our employees choosing?
Oh.
Health, uh, Pro Health?
Yeah. I'm glad you asked that question. One of the, um, questions raised at FNF, and it was, I think it was Diane that asked the question, you know, how do we, how do we know, you know, essentially Pro Health will be a good partner? How do we know that, um, our staff want to, they have faith in Pro Health, they want to work with them? Um, so, as we were talking about it, and it, it's hard to survey a, um, a clinic, I was trying to get my head around how we would go about doing that, um, and then it dawned on me that we have an ongoing survey with staff. They can go to just about any health care network in the metro Milwaukee area, and if you look at our claims data, um, 79% of our medical health services are currently being performed at Pro Health. 75% of our claims dollars go to Pro Health clinics. Um, so in my mind, our staff have already identified Pro Health as a good healthcare partner, um, and, and they've wa, they've voted with their feet and with their claims and where their doctors are, um, associated. Now, granted, Pro House is in Waukesha County, so they have a geographical advantage, but, you know, it's not that far to go to Aurora. It's not that far to go to, um, Frehert. Um, so I, I think that says a lot about, uh, that, and I also think Pro Health sees Waukesha School District as a speaking point when they go to talk clinic services to other school district, and I think they have a shared interest in this being a significant, um, success. So I, I think that brought some comfort to me in bringing the recommendation forward. I think hopefully it answered Diane's question about, um, staff's feelings. I, we've also, um, did some, um, minor conversations with small groups, Dr. Seabird has his advisory, um, committee, that's one represent, teacher representative from each school, at least one. Um, and we, we kind of laid out the same presentation that was shared at FNF, and, and then we also did it at, uh, meet and confer, um, and, and people seemed pleased, because I heard a lot of, well, that's my, where my doctor's already is at, Pro Health, and, um, so I, I think part of this is dollars, if it, if I'm here talking about it, it's dollars, I guess, um, but I think there's a lot of service things that I think staff will, um, will find, uh, nice to work with, make it easier for them. So whether it's virtual appointments and all these other things, um, so that's why I felt I could make the recommendation to FNF the other night.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Just so everyone knows, we have from HNI, our consultant, Jeff is here, too. If anybody has questions of our consultant, uh, who played a huge role in, uh, many, in many aspects of our health insurance over the years, uh, Jeff is available. Most of you do know Jeff. Uh, do, are there any questions for Jeff?
Yeah, we also have Pro Health available via email. Because of the streaming issues I had, I mainly wanted Jeff and, and maybe Kay couldn't get in either. Uh, Kay's put in a ton of work on this, Kay Olden, Oldenburg in my office, has put in a ton of, um, ton of work on this project as well, so.
Any, any questions for, for them? Yes, Kurt?
I just want to go back and review a little history of why we were, where we were versus Pro Health or anybody else at that time. And as I recall, um, Pro Health wasn't an active bidder when we decided to join up with the county and the city in this, uh, combined clinic, which the county was really spearheading on, as I recall.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah, and so, um, I think they were kind of like, what should I say? Passive resistance at the time, way back when. So I'm pleased that, you know, we've been open-minded enough as a team, and they have to seek the opportunity to provide us this service at this point in time. Um, Pro Health has always been a partner to the school district, uh, throughout the years, um, and a very, you know, as has Aurora, but, uh, so it's good to have them step up and provide us this alternative. And I assume other school districts will follow, and I assume the county will have to think through what they're doing right now, so.
Yeah, that, I mean, this, this, I could spend an hour talking about this, and, um, but that's a good point. I think you're, that was my understanding, too, Kurt, there was some resistance to a pro, local provider referring people to their own network of, of doctors, and, and one of the thing, and I don't know if you remember this as a board, but we switched to premium designation, which UHC goes through and marks off and measures efficiency in healthcare for each, uh, provider, a doctor provider, um, and Pro Health has agreed to refer only to the premium designated doctors regardless of network. Um, but a lot of our doc, like I said, a lot of our employees are already going to Pro Health. So I, I had that same, when I first heard that approach they had in the beginning that you mentioned, I, that made sense to me, but once I got into it more, we've, we've modeled our health plan, our main health plan around premium designation. Um, this better aligns, um, the clinic with that premium designation, um, approach. Um, so I, and, and we've already, we're already so closely knit via our claims to Pro Health, it, it lessened my concern in that regard.
Yes, Mr. Mantio?
Thank you. Um, yeah, big thanks to, uh, Mr. Clark and his staff for doing this. At the policy, or certainly, the meeting, FNF meeting, we had, um, a long discussion, presentation from the consultants as well as, um, Pro Healthcare, they answered just a multitude of questions. Uh, when I first heard about this, I was not skeptical, but I just kind of wanted to try to poke a hole in it. I couldn't poke a single one in it. Uh, it's the cost savings, I think is tremendous, the change in services is fantastic, there's not only going to be multiple locations, but the, um, uh, I forgot what it's called, but the internet, um, eye visits, virtual visits are fantastic, I know that's a huge thing. I did two of them this week, and they were great. Um, I just, you know, and, and, Mr. Clark, I think you mentioned it about the premium provider designation, so this is not simply a pipeline into Pro Healthcare. It's not Pro Healthcare getting this contract to pipe clients or patients just into Pro Healthcare. So I, I've looked at it, I know we've all looked at it. If the public has questions or further questions, please look at the video. It was, um, of that meeting, it was just, it was extensive. So, yeah, thank you for doing all that work.
You know, that's not to say that you change, there come some people who won't be happy with it, so.
Right.
We think this is a very good approach, but, so she and healthcare, any change is a change to somebody, um, but we will, we will work to mitigate those, um, concerns as they arise.
Mrs. Boyd?
I think it's significant, if you, if you haven't reviewed the slides, to, to look to page six, at the savings that are possible.
Yeah, everyone has a copy of the slides on their desk, sorry, Diane.
Right, but, but just to point out the fact that we're talking 522,000, 597 dollars as potential savings for a better plan, you know, is, is really a win-win. And, yeah, as Cory said, I would totally, was so impressed with the presentation that if you haven't had a chance to see it, you know, it, it really isn't, is one that would convince you that this is definitely the way to go.
And, and the reason why I think Pro Health can do that is they have these resources in place, and they're extensive, and they're able to put together a package for us that allows us to take advantage of the investments that they've made in their facilities, in their systems, and in their people. And they're, they put together, I think, a very attractive package for us, for our Other questions? Comments? I'm going to read back this motion, because there's a couple of components to it. So, we're looking at approving of entering into a contract negotiations with Pro Health for employee healthcare clinic service and providing notice to the city and county of Waukesha that the district will not be extending the current intergovernmental agreement or participating in the upcoming RFP, a request for proposal for health services, uh, for the existing shared employee clinic. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Raddie?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Cory Mantio? Cory.
Cory?
Aye, sorry.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
William Baumgard?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine, zero, Sue? Patrick?
Thank you, Joe. Uh, my first discussion item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. My second discussion information item is a referendum project update. Mr. Clark updated the committee on the revised construction schedules for the middle schools. South High School's construction is finished, and middle schools are headed, are ahead of schedule with completion slated for the end of August.
Questions or comments on either of those information or discussion items? Patrick?
Our next, uh, FNF meeting is January 12th at 5:30 PM in the boardroom, and, Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. Deetz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held on December 1st, 2020 at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. One action item and two discussion information items appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The one action item is the approval of the middle school schedule for the 2021, 2022 school year. The middle school administrative team, along with a representative teacher team existing of core area teachers, elective area teachers, and instructional coaches, examined the entire middle level schedule as well as current enrollment trends, course offerings, delivery models, and desired learning outcomes as part of a review process that lasted 18 months. The first step is in revising the middle school schedule is to ma- The first step is in revising the middle school schedule is to make a shift from our current seven-period day to an eight-unit timeframe. The schedule modification would impact sixth and seventh grade by adding an additional period to the core area time. In eighth grade, the additional period would be added to the core area specifically aligned to language arts. This shift would then align all three grade levels to follow the literacy workshop model currently in place in grade six and seven. Adjustments would be made to the elective experience in terms of progression, but not opportunities. Students entering sixth grade would have the experiences that our current sixth graders have. This includes an elective period consisting of four nine-week classes and a period of physical education alternating with a music choice. Students in seventh grade would complete the elective experience, two sections, and then have the choice of two semester electives. The eighth grade electives would remain consistent with five semester equivalent opportunities. The priorities for the new schedule include the house model, maintaining a longer literacy block, common planning time for teachers, flexible learning times for students, and students experiencing all elective areas. On a five-to-zero vote, the teaching and learning committee approved the middle school schedule as presented. We request board approval on ISO move.
There a second? Standing by Ms. Roddy. Discussion? There's someone with, just, there's someone with the mic on that we're getting some feedback. Okay, that's better. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Baumgart.
Well, all in favor of this, but there was so much here that is worth talking about. I felt very positive as we went through this process with the principals of our grades, our elementary, excuse me, middle schools. They responded to something that arose, what, 18 months ago, with a lot of questions about it and what we were doing, and families weren't happy about things. And for a while, we went back and forth with it. But once we got that group assembled, and the staff that worked with the principals, it was really marvelous what they've all accomplished. Because what they did is they took over the responsibility, which they should do, because they, in fact, are the professionals in the academic area. They took over responsibility for fixing the problem that was existing, keeping us in tuned in as what, what they're doing and what they're trying to accomplish, and presenting us at the, I wouldn't say at the end, because I'm sure there's going to be some tweaking going on, but presenting us with a solid report on what they think should be happening, coming out of this. And they had answers for all of our questions. They truly were professional in, in proving that they were the professionals in how to do this, and how to fix a problem that was coming up, and not expecting, because it shouldn't happen that way, not expecting the board to come up with the answers. But they came up with the answers to our satisfaction, at least at this point. And I just want that to be understood, that they did a tremendous amount of work and came up with, it looks like, a very positive response.
Brian?
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Baumgart. And I think it's also reflective that the teaching and learning committee is a committee now that asks a lot of questions, and sometimes slows things down because we do ask questions. I think this was well worth, the extra time that we put into this, the administrative team put into it. They were able to get all those questions answered, engage the staff more, come up with something that I felt comfortable with making the motion to approve. I didn't know if I'd ever do that when we started, but they'd answered all the questions. They really put together a nice presentation. And I was able to better understand where they were going with this based on those, those items. So I think the committee did a great job. I think the administration did a great job. And, and, you know, we have to ask questions, and we did get good responses back, and good effort back from, from the principals and the study group on this. So I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Deetz?
Just to note, too, that we asked for a lot of staff communication, and obviously the need for collaboration, as additional details need to be defined during this transition. And the teaching and learning committee also asked to be kept informed along the way as this continues to move forward.
Mrs. Voight?
I want to dito what Kurt said about the fact that you've asked questions and they gave responses. I wasn't part of the teaching and learning committee, but I was asking questions beyond, you know, after watching the meeting, you know, as a, just a participant in the community, I was asking questions, and I got some really good feedback as well. So they've, they've really done their due diligence to try to put together the most, you know, appropriate, appropriate plan they can to be able to address the concerns that, you know, have been raised. And I, you know, it's still a work in progress as they make, go through the transition and decide how the elective scheduling is going to work, et cetera. But I think they're doing a really good job of trying to put it all together.
There's a lot to work through. It was complex. Other questions or comments? Okay, we're looking to approve the middle school schedule. Sue, do you want to take the roll call vote for us?
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Greg?
The first discussion information item was mathematics vision 2020, and an update on the pilot resources that are currently being used. Over the course of last spring and into the fall of this year, math teachers across the district have been piloting three resources to support the new courses that will begin in 20, in the 21-22 school year. After soliciting feedback from students, teachers, and administrators, the team is recommending the district move to adopt Agile Minds and College Prep Math, or CPM, as the curricular resources to support integrated math. Agile Minds would be used in the monolingual classes, and CPM would be used in the dual-language classes. Agile Minds and CPM approach mathematical instruction from an inquiry-based approach. Their curricular resources allow students to engage in high levels of mathematical thinking, integrating math skills such as conceptual understanding, procedural fluency, strategic competence, adaptive reasoning, and productive disposition. Examples within the curriculum are relevant and engaging to the students, and materials can be differentiated to serve the wide variety of learners within our schools. The committee members believe that these resources will support the demands of our new curriculum, providing a rigorous, rigorous experience for all of our learners. Approval for these resources will be requested at the January 2021 TNL committees and the full, TNL committee and the full board meeting in January.
Questions or comments on, and this is a discussion item? Okay, Greg?
Second discussion information item was the learning environment transition criteria. At the board meeting on Wednesday, November 11th, 2020, the board discussed transition requirements to address COVID-19 in our schools. During the discussion, the topic was tabled to a later date and then directed to the teaching and learning committee. Dr. Seabird and Dr. Cook presented the mitigation strategies employed by the district, including criteria for transitioning between learning models. Additionally, information was presented to the committee on criteria that encompasses both the community and the district data that would trigger a board meeting to transition the entire district from face-to-face, hybrid, or all virtual learning environments.
Well, you all received a lot of information on this in the presentation. I think Dr. Cook got out the presentation in TNL. Questions or comments on, on this? Okay, Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the teaching and learning committee report this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, here in the boardroom at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to our government relations committee, given by Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The government relations committee met Monday, November 30th, here at the Lynton Building. The committee had one housekeeping action item, which was the approval of the previous month, meetings minutes. Discussions stemmed after that regarding Section 3, Subsection C, clarification that the SDW alumni group is an independent collection of SDW alumni led by eight individuals. After their meetings with district administrators, two representatives from the SDW alumni group were invited to join two different administrative committees that include community, community stakeholders. The agenda for the committee had three discussion information items. The first was the SWSA meeting recap and highlights. Mrs. Voight shared with the group that the first Friday of each month, SDW, S, too many S's in my report, excuse me, SWSA meets with school board members only, and with the full committee on the second Tuesday of each month. She went on to share some highlights over, regarding the following topics. I'm going to try to do this quickly here. Racine School District wrote a resolution, and other, and other districts are submitting letters to the editors, to papers in their communities, encouraging the communities to follow CDC guidelines. The SWAB services are, I apologize, there are, I'm having issues. WSAB?
I think it's WASB.
WASB, yes. I am so sorry.
I know, we have a million acronyms, but I think we mean WASB there.
I do mean WASB. Services were discussed. Board development, equity, training support, superintendent evaluations, and envisioning were some of those services that were discussed. They also discussed new board members onboarding, handbooks and guides for other school board candidates, which will probably be a hot topic coming up here soon. They also discussed that they are holding interviews with candidates for the DPI superintendent, which has been really interesting to follow along with them. The SWSA meets regularly with doctors from Children's Hospital, and our administrators, Dr. Cook, Dr. Seabird, and Jody Landish have been in attendance for all of those sessions. A recommendation by Mr. O'Brien was shared with the SWSA and was well-received. The recommendation was to lobby to have teachers consider essential workers and to be able to get their vaccines sooner. That is a discussion item for the SWSA updates. Are there any questions or comments? Being none, we'll move forward. The next item has to do with legislative connections and goals for the committee. I shared with the committee that some of our original thoughts and goals of this committee were to share agendas with state representatives, invite state and local representatives into our schools, share highlights from within the district, keep an eye on the legislative agendas, keep up with special circumstances such as the state superintendent election coming up. Dr. Seabird and I will continue to work together to come up with recommendations and goals for this particular committee in the upcoming year. This, too, is a discussion item. If there are any comments or?
Brian?
Yeah, I would, you know, suggest as we try to go through this that, I know we're already on the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance conduit directly into the committee, but we should also try and make sure that we coordinate well the basic objectives of WASB around, generally WASB always endorses self-determination for school districts. They don't like mandates and such as that. So I think it's something that we should be aware of in terms of what WASB is doing to support school districts. Usually that meshes well with what the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance is also doing. So having that all together and all be aware at the committee level, I think, is important. Just like the prior topic, you know, WASB is also going to consider lobbying for teachers designated as essential workers and early candidates for vaccination for COVID, so.
Very much for that.
Diane?
Yes, related to that, Mr. O'Brien, we do have almost at every one of the first Friday of the month meetings, a WASB representative, or two. In many cases, it's been more than one. We're very much tuned in to that, that kind of working together, you know, between SWSA and WASB.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Brian?
And the reason Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance exists is because WASB is pretty heavily dominated by much smaller school districts. And to get our voice heard, we had to kind of form our own group, which scared WASB a little bit because they don't want to see a separate group starting that might split off from WASB, which we have not done. So Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance has our own lobbyist, I assume, still.
Amy.
And then we also piggyback off of Milwaukee's lobbyist as well. And so coordinating all these groups, as we do, seems to work, seems to be the best opportunity to have to influence the legislators.
There's, there's value with being related with both groups. But we need to be able to pick and choose what's best, the information that's best that each of those groups present and assimilate it in the manner we believe is best for our, our district. So. Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, Amanda?
All right, thank you. The last discussion information item was presented by Darren Clark regarding school funding as it relates to school choice and open enrollment. Mr. Clark shared information regarding student budget impact by category. For example, the resident students attending SDW, resident enrollment out, Montessori school students, non-resident open enrollment in, voucher program, and resident students who attend a non-voucher program, private school. A copy of the chart that he presented to the committee was sent out to everyone. Lovely little display that he shared. Mr. Clark, if there's anything else you might want to add to that, or if there's any questions from committee members for further detail?
Yeah, I just, when talking about it at the meeting the other, well, I guess a couple of weeks ago now, that was timely, though, because as we get into the state budget cycle, these different topics are going to bubble up and then fade away, and bubble up and fade away, and maybe they net out at the end. But it was developed originally just as a cheat sheet for my office, so we could keep track of what each kid was. But I think it's a quick, and hopefully it's a simple, you know, not only from a revenue side, but also from a state aid, tax levy side, what, how all these different types of categories fit into our overall budget.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Amanda?
All right, thank you very much. Regarding other business, at the committee meeting, there was a recommendation for the committee to just keep an eye on the next budget, budget cycle, as it will begin here soon. And the last item that was discussed had to do with televising our committee meeting. I'll be working with the administration to work out the details, to have someone available to run the AV for future meetings. The next government relations committee meeting is to be determined. The committee will continue to report out quarterly to the full board. The next report should come out in March. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. Moving on to safety and security, given by Ms. Reinichak.
Mr. President, safety and security meeting did not meet this month, but we will be meeting on the 21st at 6 o'clock right here.
Okay, thank you. 21st of December?
Yes, I said we did not meet this month. I meant in, in November. No, no updates to provide.
Gotcha.
But we will be meeting on the 21st of December, right here, 6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our human resources and compensation committee, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We had one action item, the approval of the 21-22 school calendar. Each year at this time, we develop a school calendar for the following school year. The proposed school calendar for 2021-2022 was provided in your packet. We obtained teacher feedback at the superintendent's advisory committee for professional staff on December 2nd, 2020. The human resources committee reviewed the calendar draft at the November HR meeting and approved the final calendar earlier this evening. Mr. President, I move to approve the 2021-2022 school calendar as presented.
There a second to that? Standing by Mr. Deetz. Discussion? Comments? Voight?
I think one of the, the very positive takeaways is that snow days are still going to be included in the calendar, that we're not going virtual just because we have the capability of going virtual, and that we can celebrate the idea that there might be a day off because the weather wanted it to be a day of rest in our schedules.
Questions or comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinichak?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. Kurt?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to other business. Okay, thank you. Moving on to other business, are there recommendations for items to be agendized for full board meetings, or any suggestions to pass on to our committee chairs? Okay, seeing none. We do have a need for closed session, and I would be looking for a motion to go into closed session. And that would be item... Mr. McCaffrey?
I move to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public, uh, public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Oakdale offered to purchase tax keys WAKC 1360198, WAKC 1377002002, and WAKC 1377003.
Your second to that motion?
Second.
Taken by Amanda. Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Greg Deetz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes nine zero. Um, that concludes the open portion of our meeting. We will not be reconvening into open session tonight. So Josiah, that's good news. You get to study for your test tonight.
You made it.
And, uh, we, um, we will go into closed session, watch this five-minute break. Or do you want to just roll right in?